Okay, good evening, everyone, on this warm Monday evening. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Committee of the Hall. And Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Boland?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Dennenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Krempeler?
Here.
Mayor Mila Wambly?
Here. And we're gonna move on to public comment, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We received no emailed public comment, we do have one person to speak, that's Serena Fish, after you read your statement.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Thank you.
Hello? Make sure I'm back to three minutes. My name is Serena Fish. And I'm here to talk about something that's going on in some of the downtown revitalization, some of the things. But it still connects to the town, the city. Recently, we're reading that they have moved some of the people out of the area over by the Mission, and they're down to maybe twenty people. Well, I'm here to tell you, those twenty people didn't get put in housing. They decided to move off the asphalt, and they're around the corner underneath the fifty-one bridge going north. They're on the sidewalks, coming down the side of the bridge, going south on fifty-one. The other day, we came to the store, that would be Alley Cats there on Borough One South Center, under the other side of the bench, bridge. And here are two young people having on the upper part of the bridge. And they were across the street behind the other Hermes building. On, that's what we're facing down there, and you're talking about putting in or letting it exist a conglomeration of entities that take care of all the problems of these people, and putting it right downtown. And yet, we're getting more and more complaints from downtown people about the preacher out there screaming at the top of his the smell of urine, it goes on and on. And I really think it's time, before you start investing in upgrading downtown, that you get rid of the low end. Because most of these people aren't going into housing, they're not, all they're doing is anything that's free, they're getting it. They all got phones, they all got stuff, everybody's giving them stuff, there is no reason to move for them. So before spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on revitalizing downtown, I sincerely suggest you clean it up first.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, sounds good, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and consideration of inaction on approving the minutes of April fifteenth.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, okay, motion by Councilmember Boland, and then second by Councilmember Ward.
Just do a roll call, it's the only item, yeah, Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dennenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
I.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Krempeler?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda passes, no needs to announce, and we're gonna move on to the regular agenda, a presentation and discussion and direction on Bloomington Housing Symposium Report as requested by the Administration Department. And before I turn it over to City Manager Jurgens, I just wanted to say that I have heard a lot of very positive comments about the Symposium, a lot of people, one, not only in terms of the attendance, but how it was put together, the moderators, Deputy City Manager Tyus, and then City Manager Jurgens, but also the staff that, you know, assisted in putting it together. So, just wanted to say that because I know it's hard for people to pat themselves on the back, but I thought it was very important to say, and really looking forward to what you have to present here today, and see how we can move forward as a council and community, so. With that said, I will turn it over to City Manager Jurgens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, as everybody up here knows, housing is a big issue facing this community. And we, we wanna find out what we can do effectively to help tackle that issue. And we wanted to start by trying to find out and realize, we don't know what we don't know. So we wanted to get all of the players in a room, get the experts, the developers, the contractors, the lenders, and talk about those issues, what are the barriers that they're facing, what are potential solutions, what are their recommendations, and then bring that back to the council. So I wanna start by thanking staff for helping to put this on, I've asked Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus, Melissa Hahn, our Director of Economic and Community Development, and then Michael Hill, our management analyst, to present tonight on what, what some of our findings were, what some of the discoveries were, and then we'll have the council talk about it further, and we'll go from there. So with that, I turn it over to Billy Tyus.
Thank you, appreciate it. A couple of things, tonight, I, I think you all have received the draft report that displays the results of the Symposium and some of the votes that we got from folks who were in the room. So I won't, we won't dig too deeply into that unless you want to. We really just wanna talk about it on a high level, sort of what we saw and what we heard, and then give you a chance to review that, and then we'll come back for further discussion here at some point. The thing that, as the City Manager mentioned, that we were really most impressed about was the fact that we had nearly, I think, sixty builders and developers and bankers and lenders in the same room, talking about the question of housing. Lots of local folks, for sure, but we also had people who traveled from as far away as, as the Chicagoland area and Indiana as well, who, who we're currently having conversations with, who have a strong interest in building in the Bloomington community. And so, I, we definitely have an issue, there's an issue with housing, but I want everyone here to know that there are people who are, who have a very, very, very strong interest in doing work here, so much so that they chose to come to our community as part of the Symposium. And again, we're having very regular conversations with them about housing and building, and we're, I feel like we're close on some, and I'll leave it there. Again, nearly, nearly sixty folks, we hear anecdotally what the challenges are and what the problems are, but we wanted to hear from the people who are doing the work and those who are financing it. Phil, if you'll go to the next slide, please. So, you know, we, we hear conversations about how much housing we need, and whether we need housing, and those kinds of things. And there are differing opinions, so the first thing we wanted to hear from folks is whether they thought there was a question or issue, or whether we needed to do something to address housing. And it was clear from the folks in the room, we felt like that there is a need to address housing. So, we've heard it from the builders, we've heard it from the bankers, we've heard it from, heard and hear it from the people looking for housing, that, we hear it from the professionals who are, you know, EDC and others, and Regional Plan Commission. Just, it, it was important for us to hear from these folks to see if they also think there's an issue, or if they're out there building, which we knew there weren't, but we wanted to hear from them. So, if there's an, i- i- if you look at the vote totals, and what we did was that we had this, I felt like, this really cool tool where people would be able to vote on their phones, people in the room could vote on their phones on these different issues, and then we were able to collect the data. So, if we're hearing from folks that there is definitely an issue, and most of, for most of the folks, it wasn't just a negligible issue, it was, they voted ten, that it's a really significant issue. Then the questions become, what kind of housing do we need, where do we want it, and what are the challenges in getting the housing built quickly? And I feel like we felt that theme started to emerge, we weren't completely surprised by some of it, but we definitely saw some things and themes in some of this. If you go to slide three, please, Phil. One of the first questions we asked the group were, was, what type of housing options do you feel like we need based on your experience? And again, not necessarily, not surprised, I won't say necessarily. Most of the folks talked about the need for affordable housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, it's what you've traditionally talked about, you know, whereby more than, no more than thirty percent of your income is spent on housing and housing-related items. And so, again, market rate, a very similar definition, although, you know, you could argue that our market these days is very high, but i- in terms of this conversation, market rate was very similar to some of the affordable housing. Really, in low income, and then there were actually folks who voted for luxury, which, again, you know, they're out there building it, and there are folks out there who are spending money on that type of housing, and so. In terms of the folks in the room, they voted and said that affordable housing was, you know, what we should focus our efforts on, in terms of the work that we're doing. So, if you'll go to slide four, please. So then a question becomes, if we, if we hear from them, what's the type of housing that we feel as though we need? Where, as builders and as bankers and as professionals in the industry, where do you think it should be built in the community, very generally, and the folks had an opportunity to place dots on the screen to determine their votes? Again, lots of folks focused on the middle of the community, but also lots of folks focused on, you know, going out towards the west, and where our, we have some emerging employment centers, with Ferrero, who is growing exponentially, with Rivian, in our, the city at the neighborhood to our north. Folks focused in the, in the center of the city, but also to the west as well, there are other places, but really, a lot of the focus was on those areas in terms of preference. I think this map, i- i- it says something in that those are the places that people want to see the building, but really, we're in a, a place and a space right now where we have a very limited number of vacant lots, and lots that are already ready to build. Now that's, all is not lost because of that, it just means that those are things that we need to focus on as we go forward in trying to address this issue. Before I go further, Melissa, did I say that properly, in terms of the number of lots we have that are ready?
Yeah, so you can see in the map below that, and I'll get into it a little bit more when we talk about the website here at the end of the presentation, but we went through to look at, you know, where there's vacancy and, and how easy it would be to come in and, and build based on, you know, accessibility to infrastructure. And so, as you can see, really, as, as we're talking about infill, it's very limited, kind of in the core of our community, or what has become the core of the community. Glad to see, though, a lot of votes for really kind of the downtown area. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll see some further development as, as we work on things for the downtown as well, and, and think that we'll, we'll start to see some of that additional housing within the downtown, in the downtown be realized.
Thank you. And so, when I say that that's not an issue that we can't overcome, if you'll go to the next slide, please, Phil. If you look at this map, and it's, it, it, the map on the bottom shows lots that are in varying stages of readiness that are already vacant. And what that means is that perhaps they haven't been platted, but they're near infrastructure. Or perhaps they are, they have an infrastructure plan, or a preliminary infrastructure plan that's been considered and approved, which means that there are just other steps to be taken to make sure that they are buildable, I'll say it that way. And so, the other thing to think about is that, I, I think we looked at vacant, well, we've obviously looked at vacant land as it relates to this. There are opportunities, if the council so chooses, to also target areas where perhaps we've got dilapidation of, of structures and housing that is not salvageable, I don't mean going and tear down a lot of housing, that's not what I'm saying. But there could be areas whereby there are revitalization plans that go in on land that is, got structures on it, that we perhaps repurpose the land, and so there are opportunities to address this issue. Next slide, please. So we talked about whether housing is a problem, we talked about where would you like to see it with the group. The other thing we did is, we asked the group, you know, what do you see as the barriers to getting shovels in the ground? What is it that is slowing your growth and development, and we produce what is, you know what this is, is a word cloud whereby folks would vote on their phones, and they could have multiple votes. And as people voted for similar items, and used similar words, those words grew. And so, as you can see on this word cloud, a definite trend started to develop, where builders and bankers are saying really that the cost of building, interest rates, and financing and related items are really the big issues that, that they're facing these days. And again, we're not surprised by that, but overall, those are the big things that they're facing. Of course, you know, we, we hear and we know that there are questions and issues with, with government, I mean, we know that that's, that's a question. We know that it's a question in terms of, are there things we can do with our zoning ordinance to help either speed development or be more flexible with development? We also know that there are things with our ordinances that perhaps we just need to do a better job of explaining, because in a, in a lot of cases, people don't think they can do certain things, and the zoning ordinance already allows for it. So, we had lots of ideas, but really a theme started to develop around cost, interest rates, and financing. So then the question, next slide, please, Phil. So, we, once we had that, we started to talk about what are potential ideas for speeding development, again, getting shovels in the ground. So we did a couple of things. One, we came to the table with a list of things that we've heard from people, from builders and bankers. Over time, we've been talking about this for several, for a while now, things that we heard might be helpful, and we asked them to vote on those items. And then we asked them for a listing of, of possible ideas for addressing housing barriers as well. And really, the top three things people talked about were, one, the potential to create a low or no interest loan fund. Now, let me back up. I wanted, I, we also said to the group, these are ideas and thoughts that we've heard from you, we don't know that all of these are doable, and some of them will involve more research and more conversations, and in some cases, partnerships with others, but we don't wanna limit your thoughts by saying, no, we can't do that at this point, we just wanted to have a free conversation. Some of the things they talked about included creating a low to no interest loan fund, again, because the cost of money these days is, is so high for folks. I think there's an assumption that that has to be publicly funded, but why? I mean, are, is there a conversation to be had with our local industry to say, hey, some of the reasons that we're having, that we need more housing is because we're an attractive community, and people are coming here to work? Is there a role for local business in investing some of the housing, in some of the housing or a fund like that as well? One of the other things we talked about that ranked very high was targeting areas for higher development incentives. And what we meant by that, and we explained this to the room, was, what if we, what if we took areas that we wanted to see developed, or that seemed prime for development, and we said, hey, building community, if, if you're interested in building, and if you will come in, and you'll build, for argument's sake, fifty percent market rate and forty percent affordable, or whatever those percentages are, perhaps we target areas where we give a higher incentive to get the type of housing that we need. We talked about targeting areas for development, so it could look something like that, again, more work to be done. Tax assessment freezes, and looking at the tax assessment process, a lot of the developers talked about the fact that they have concerns about the, the unpredictability of their taxes. And so, they've talked about the fact, we talked about the, what if we could have agreement with local taxing bodies to freeze the assessment level over a certain number of years, three, five, seven, ten, whatever that number would be? So, the builders knew, generally, what they would get in terms of the assessed value of their properties, but that also doesn't mean that the taxing bodies don't get more money if they need more money. You know, if there are, there's a higher rate, or if they levy a higher dollar amount, they still get more money, but it becomes a level of compromise. That idea was something that, that folks wanted to strongly consider as well. And then again, the fourth item was, you know, public infrastructure building and development. One of the highest costs of some of these developments is infrastructure, water mains, sewer mains, streets, sidewalks, those kinds of things. Are there opportunities potentially for the city or other funds to build that for builders, and then a fee gets assessed on the property to pay back the cost of doing that work? So again, general ideas, they rank those, and those are the rankings that you see there. Phil, next slide, please. So, one of the other things that bankers talked about is the fact that in today's market, they're asking for more for builders, they're asking for more equity. And so they talked about, is there a need for equity assistance with builders? Meaning, they're saying they've gotta have more skin in the game in terms of getting lending. And so, could there also be a possibility of, of helping with, with equity for builders? And so, we've taken those things, and the things we wanna do is really have a conversation about some of what you heard today. We want you to have a, we want you to take a look at the report. And what we would recommend is coming back with a resolution to explore certain items going forward. Again, some of these ideas have a need for more research, more conversation with our taxing body partners, just more work. And so we would like to come forward with a resolution at the next meeting, I believe, Jeff, to to direct staff and partners to develop a housing incentive package. You know, that could include things like targeting development areas, as I talked about, the tax assessment freeze, or the rebate, or learning more about how the assessment process works. I mean, that's, that's not disparaging of our assessor at all, but I know that one of the things that we've heard, and we've heard it at this meeting, I believe, in some cases, is that people are sometimes surprised at what happens with their tax bill. Having a better understanding of what that looks like and how it works could be helpful. Or again, the public infrastructure program, developing a housing incentive package, that could, could include that. One of the other things that people talked about at the meeting was, we shouldn't just focus on new construction. There are structures in our community that could use a little love, more than a little love, in order to make them more habitable and usable in our community. So, we'd like for you to direct us to focus on a neighborhood rehab program that is more robust than the work we already do. That would be a part of that resolution as well. And the Intergovernmental Housing Recovery Implementation Committee would look to partner with some of our, our intergovernmental partners and other agencies, be it the EDC, or the Regional Plan Commission and others, to put together a committee to look at some of these issues and keep these things moving forward. That was one of the things that was included in the recovery plan that Ray Laak spoke to, I think it was a month ago. Resolution directing us to do, to, to, to move forward with that. Again, the idea of a lower no interest development funding program, for us to investigate the idea of doing something like that and puts more meat on the bones in terms of what that could look like. You know, is that, is that mostly municipal, the municipalities or the town? Or private groups, or does it involve, you know, private industry investing in something like that as well? Because again, we know for a fact that part of the issue, a big part of the issue, is that people can't afford to build. The manager and I had a meeting recently with a builder as a follow-up to the Symposium, and I won't name names or give specifics, but we talked the numbers in terms of what it actually costs to build today with inflation and the cost of materials and the cost of labor. And it makes it very, very difficult to build new, something that is within the affordability range that we're looking for. And so, do we create a program that helps to fund some of that work, at least in the short term? And finally, zoning ordinance review. It's something we've been wanting to do, and we're going to do anyway, but it came out of the conversation as well. We look at our zoning orders to see if it meets today's needs, and also, as I talked to earlier, whether there are things that we need to do a better job of explaining to folks so that they see that you can already do some of the work that they want to do. One of the things that comes to mind is, people talk a lot about, we should be able to build accessory structures on properties and those kinds of things. Well, my understanding is that we can already do that, it's part of our zoning ordinance, and I just don't think that people necessarily know that, and we need to do a better job of explaining that. So look at the zoning ordinance to see what we should do better, different change, but also see what those things are that we can already do, that, that, that could help with this issue. So again, to clarify this sheet, what we recommend is a resolution coming forward at the next meeting to say, staff, work to develop these things as a way to address some of the housing issues. Now you may say, all you're talking about is developers and development. The reason that is the case is because this came out of the Housing Development Symposium, and we're already partnering with other entities, the Regional Plan Commission, the EDC and others, to address some of the very real concerns that are on the rental side, and people not being able to afford housing. So we're, we're, we're trying to attack this from, from two different areas. And one of the other things that we are doing and have done are to create a website that is buildingbloomington.com, and Melissa Hahn is gonna speak to that in terms of what it is and what it, what it can become. We wanted to create sort of a one-stop location for builders and others to go to find out more about incentive programs and some of the mapping that we talked about. Some of the things they have to do before we can Um, some of the things they have to do before we can approve a plan and those kinds of things. And so we've created this website that is a work in process and that will continue to grow, um, where people can do that. And before we go to Melissa, um, I, I just want to ask if the manager has anything to add to any of that.
Thanks, uh, Deputy City Manager Tyus, really appreciate all that. Um, the only two other things I would say is, one, I think the symposium was very eye-opening. We, we walked away, I think all of us walked away thinking that we are not going to address this in the traditional sense. We're not going to build, single family, build our way out of the housing crunch, that we're going to have to be creative, we're going to have to look at different solutions and, and be open-minded about how we address it. So I, I wanted to mention that. The other thing, and I, I mentioned this at the symposium too, is I realize, I know all of us realize, government can't always be the answer, we can't solve every problem. But if there's something we can do to help with the housing crunch that makes sense for everybody, we want to explore it and we want to offer that up on the table. So the items that you saw tonight that, uh, that the deputy city manager laid out, if there are things on there that this council says, oh, absolutely not, I'm not interested in that, you can tell us that and we won't go any further down there. Or if there's something else, A, you left this off, off the list, I know we want staff to look at that, you can tell us that and we'll put that in the resolution that's going to come forward. So just wanted to mention those two things. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Melissa? All right, thank you. Good evening, City Manager, Mayor and Council. Um, so as Deputy City Manager Tyus mentioned, we put together a website, hopefully to make it very easy for people to find and locate all the resources that they need. So, uh, you can go through the city's website and, and find the page, or you can just go to buildingbloomington.com and it will take you here. So, um, Phil, if you could scroll down a little bit, um, we do have contact information there at the top. If anybody has any questions or they're looking for additional information, they're not finding listed, um, there's an email address there that they can, um, go to. This is an interactive map, um, as we were showing segments of that in the presentation. Um, we went through to identify where we had, um, potential, uh, development opportunities, vacant land. And as you can see on there, we've kind of broken it down by color. So the darker, that's like cladded, ready to go. Um, it is ready to be built. Um, as the colors get lighter, um, that very, the lightest one is basically there's, there's infrastructure close. Um, so you know, it can be extended to develop that area. But, uh, the darker color, the, the closer it is, is being ready to go. And then Phil, if you can click on one of those parcels. Um, so as you go in here too, you can click on it, it will tell you what level it's at, uh, what the zoning is, um, kind of the size of the, of the lot available. Um, so it will give you some additional, additional information there. Thank you. And then if you could scroll down a little bit more. And so we've got links on here and dropdowns. So for project review group, that is our group that meets every Wednesday from one to three. Um, so anyone that's looking to develop, they can schedule a time to come in and we've got, um, all the staff there from fire, water, engineering, planning, economic development. So they can come to that one meeting and meet with everybody at one time, talk about their proposed development. So this provides a link to where they can go and, um, submit a request to schedule an appointment to come to, um, project review group. And then if you'll scroll down, Phil. Um, here we've got, um, the enterprise zone. So if anybody wants to verify whether or not the property is within the enterprise zone, that will take them to the EDC page and they can look at that map. And then obviously scroll through any other resources, um, through the EDC's page if they need to, um, find any additional resources. And the next one for site search, we linked that with the lowest site that is managed once again by Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council. Um, but this shows various sites that are available, uh, if individuals are looking for, uh, specific, you know, mostly commercial buildings, but we did link that on here. If it's something that, you know, maybe they could feel would, would be a reuse, um, you know, that would work for, um, the developer. Then if you could scroll down, Phil, thank you. So this will take you just to the regular GIS map. If they wanted to go in and dig a little bit further, um, into a property, they could do that from here and that links to our county GIS. Um, and then there's links on there to the CDBG information, if they wanted more information about that. We did just recently get some additional funding from IDA, so that's great. So we've got, um, funding there, uh, for housing rehabilitation. And then we've got the link to the qualified census tract. So developers that regularly work with Lytech credits, they know that this is going to get them additional points if they develop within a qualified census tract. So we linked that information as well for them. And, um, then down below, uh, we've got Bureau of Labor Statistics. And then we've got the boxes on here, links, um, just throughout the city's website to take you to different pages. If you're interested in finding more about, uh, development incentives, permits, um, looking at our current permit reports. And then, um, further down at the bottom, we do have, uh, once again, our contact information and then also a link to census data, um, there from that site. So as Billy mentioned, this is just ever growing and evolving as we get requests for information, but I'm trying to provide everything in, in one location.
The, the other, um, thing I would add that we're looking to add to this is also an update on current projects. So there will be an easy way to tell what's in the pipeline, what, what construction is ongoing, how many, you know, residential building permits are out there, how many units are being built? And we can start to look at that and, and give the community some context around what's being built within the city as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I, I think, uh, at this point, we'll, uh, start with, uh, questions from, uh, from the council. I'll start with one though. Um, I'm curious as to the, uh, the suggestions that you're making to study a little bit further. Maybe if you have some ideas of timelines, uh, in terms of developing those, uh, those options, when should, when can we expect, once we pass the resolution, when can we expect to see?
We're, we're going to start now, like start now. And in terms of some of those, they'll be, I'm, I'm thinking weeks, but some of those will take longer, obviously. What, one of the things we are going to do that the manager has suggested is that we're going to give you regular updates, uh, starting after the resolution is considered, so that you know sort of where some of those things stand. Some of those things we can do, you know, easily. For example, we didn't list this, but we can take a look at some of our fees. When, when people talk about government, we can take a look at some of our fees now and figure out if there are ways to reduce or waive those kinds of things. But we will regularly update you as a council, um, in terms of where things stand. So I don't have a, a timeline as to when it will be done, but we're going to start immediately.
Okay. Cause I suspect that a property tax freeze, for example, will take not only talking to the different taxing bodies, but at the same time also assessing the financial impact, you know, for everyone. Okay. Sounds good. Questions?
So Councilmember Ward, Boland, Montney.
I know, thanks for this. Um, it's some really interesting suggestions and I'm, I'm really looking forward to us being able to dig into this conversation more. Um, a number of times I've, I've made reference to land tax. Um, I've made reference to it in this space and I've made reference to it in individual conversations with, with staff and with, um, members of the council. And, and I really would like to see us add that to the conversation. The idea that we would continue to basically reward blight and punish development and building seems counterintuitive to me. To me, it makes a whole lot more sense to reward people who are willing to, um, develop blighted properties or unused properties rather than to simply punish them by, by, um, them having to basically pay more property tax on development. There are models out there, there are cities out there that have been doing this successfully. And I'd like to see what the possibilities are for us to be able to do that. I, I think at one point I also asked for some information about, um, about if, if anybody could share what kind of a percentage of properties that are blighted or vacant in, within the community are owned by out of town landlords or, or property owners who are basically sitting there watching properties turn to dust and, and not doing anything about them. And to me, that's a place to start with this conversation because the people who live here shouldn't have to, have to, um, basically be forced to pay for, for development that they do when people who are out of town and not committed to the community are simply letting things blow away in the dust. And that, that it, it's just out of balance. So if we could add that to the list of possibilities, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Boland.
Oh, boy. Um. I went to the symposium and I stayed for about half the amount of time. And I, I really appreciate, like, uh, City Manager Jergen said, to get the input, uh, a lot of it was eye-opening, but some of the suggestions were status quo. I've heard them before and we need to be more than creative. We need to be, um, we need to have a paradigm shift as a part of, as a part of, uh, approaching the housing. And any resolution that would come forward for a vote next week would have to include only something that does not require financial investment from the city, if that makes any sense. I think we should focus on things like zoning, um, and any other thing that, uh, would not involve funding. I'm not a fan of, um, eliminating tap-on fees because those fees actually pay for the infrastructure, um, that is already present or it pays for that infrastructure to, in the future. And those are services that have to be provided by the city. And if we don't have that money, we're going to have to continue to raise fees to pay for that. So, so I don't want to go down that route. I don't know about permitting, how much that is for saving, but one other point I'd like to make is that there was very little discussion about the consumer. The consumer faces 7% interest. The banks only provide almost 0% interest on savings. How can, um, a resident or consumer save enough money for a 20% down payment? What can the banks do? Not the city, what can the banks do for that? What can the developers do for that? The, again, this past week, building permit, half a million dollar building permits for houses out in the Grove and nothing for any other price range. Uh, that needs to be, you know, addressed from the developer's point of view. I do think that putting some kind of team together to evaluate would be valuable, but I cannot commit to any kind of decision. I, I would like to just have more time to process this. You know, uh, Councilmember Kearns, myself and, um, the mayor were present at this, but the rest of the council was not. There's a lot of information to digest here.
No, I appreciate, can it, do you mind? I'm sorry. No, just a couple of things. One, completely understand that the comment about financing and providing financial incentives. What we would be coming forward with is asking permission or asking for direction to look at what that could look like and whether it made sense to do something because the cost of construction is so high. One of the reasons that there aren't affordable houses being built is because the cost to build them is so high. And so we want to be able to look at whether there are ways to help with that. And the answer may be no, but we want the opportunity to be able to look at that. The other thing I will say is that you mentioned consumers and you're right. Our, what we're, what we're talking about today was a, a, a result of the symposium we had with builders. So that's why the focus is on that. We are also working with the other parties on some of the consumer-driven concepts and ideas. We're working, we will be working and working with the Regional Plan Commission. We work with the EDC and others. Cause you can't, you're right, you can't just do this and not do something to help consumers. And so we're working on those things as we will be working on those things as well, but you're right, you can't do one without the other.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Montney?
And I'm reading the book as well, by the way.
Just, I'll start out with some questions and then some comments. So, um, if you could pull up the slide that says, here are all the things that we think we can do or we should take a look at. I didn't see a slide number on it.
Phil, I think it's the next to the last slide is?
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so reading the notes that were provided to us in advance of the meeting, um, one of the things that struck me was a comment, I believe on slides 11 that said, although government-related barriers were included in the responses to this question, those issues were not later ranked as having a high impact. So just for a backdrop, setting aside that comment, um, in the packet that we received. So my first question really relates to financial implications of many of these recommendations. And I'm interested to know, as you talk about, um, the interest rate incentives and other things that the city would provide as incentives, whether to consumers or to developers. Scenario one out for me, give me an idea of the math that you considered, um, to understand the cost implications of that type of a, that type of a decision that we would make.
And, and I, this isn't the greatest answer, but I will say that we don't know yet in terms of, what, what we do know is that cost is a barrier and we know that we will need to consider the financial implications. We're asking for the ability to, to move forward with something like that because we do know that the cost is such a significant issue. You know, those are conversations that we would have to have as part of going forward, looking at something like that. And again, it may not pencil out, it may not price out, but you know, what we know for sure is that people have said they can't afford to build.
That's right. I mean, I can certainly understand and appreciate that. And it's not just the cost of housing, it's really the cost of living, you know? And we're in a community and we're in a world where most people aren't, um, you know, fortunate enough to have a cost of living, um, increase built into their household income. So choices are being made, as we heard from our representative from Mira a few weeks ago. But I, I just want to offer up, um, one example, just a quick example of the math, because I think, uh, to Councilmember Boland's point, um, in, in my mind, we're going from brainstorming about a problem that includes world hunger, world peace, saving whales, everything. A huge issue to, uh, brainstorming session to, let's get something on paper and let's start trying to action this right here in our community. And I commend everyone for their enthusiasm around that because I think, um, we're all feeling it. Um, you know, we all hear these stories and we all know people that are impacted by it. But if we just took a quick look, using some of the medians that were provided us today, 300,000 house, 280,000 financed over a 30-year period and not even at the current rates being offered, but just looking at the difference in a 4% and a 6% interest rate. So if, let's say we collaborated with someone or we, you know, decided that we would explore, you know, um, buy down of 2% on that horizon of that mortgage, on a 30-year mortgage. on that horizon of that mortgage on a thirty year mortgage. That alone for one would come up to a hundred and twenty three thousand, a hundred and twelve dollars on one unit, one buy down of two percentage points on a thirty year mortgage. So I just putting that out there for context, because as we look at these things, I'm sure there was a lot of enthusiasm because, you know, when we talk about these things, you know, people are motivated. I I've seen it. I feel it. But I think the next step would be to get Scott Raffman's staff involved and really go down and look at the cost implications of some of these ideas before we go about voting on a a resolution to, you know, pursue them or target certain things and and that sort of thing. I just think we're just not, we're just not there yet. A few other things that that came into my mind, too, is, you know, ha- have we narrowed down some you know, expectation as to income levels? Have we narrowed down expectations as to, you know, just theorizing, you know, the cost of our own funds also being impacted by the same rising costs all over the place? And then, you know, I'm I'm reminded, you know, with maybe a little bit of PTSD, the housing crisis of two thousand and eight. And I think it would be super important for staff to go back and look at the decisions that underscored leading up to that. So many of them incredibly well intended. And then, you know, in that well intention, what we found was lending institutions as well in partnership with governmental organizations not recognizing that we were incenting people to purchase homes that otherwise they could not afford. And when you see that play out over time, again, that's, you know, kind of what led to all of that. So just, you know, an important thing to just step back to a super complicated issue. There wasn't any one bull silver bullet that caused it or that would solve it. But this is just a massively complex, you know, problem. The the next piece, you know, the Panograph wrote about this just yesterday. We do have a lot of housing units in this community that are starting there in process. And, you know, I I was struck by one of the comments relating to the developers saying, you know, I can't get the funding. Well, that's that is the reality of where we are. And we have cost of funds, too. And when we spend money that then further takes away from the balance of the people in our community, it tends to perpetuate the same challenge that we're currently in. The vast majority of people aren't going to be changing houses. And they would in turn be bearing the cost of any of these incentives that we were to create. Not to mention also the other taxing bodies and education and so on and so forth, which would just, again, continue, continue to fuel those costs. So I'm intrigued by Councilmember Ward's comments about what is in our current inventory of, I'm sure we probably even have city owned properties that we perhaps have taken on due to tax liens or something like that. I mean, I mean, if you really want to narrow and zero in on something where we could create a problem statement that would be defined enough to be able to work on it. You know, maybe, maybe that's a lane to go. But the vast majority of what, you know, was up on that slide and I'm seeing it gone again. The cost implications of those are are just huge. And I would hate to see us, you know, try to speed up and get a resolution saying, you know, we all agree this is a problem and then shotgun out around trying to figure out these things when we're just not there yet with the depth of the preliminary analysis to reconcile that comment. The government barriers related were included in the responses. They were not ranked as having high impact, high impact. That piece to, you know, the things that we're talking about, which are all the government piece, connecting those dots, but doing the math first. And that that's what I feel like, you know, really needs to be the near term focus to understand and do the math and to realize that cost of funds impacts the municipal government, too. It's not just an issue that impacts consumers and developers and impacts all of us.
Okay, we think we're gonna run out of time. We have a couple more people here that'd like to speak. So I don't know if you wanna okay, is there a second? Okay.
So the last comment I'll make would just be that, you know, if we
I think we need to vote. Councilmember Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Board.
I.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Is a- as it relates to the blighted properties and back to Councilmember Ward's point, I think, you know, really leaning in on the census tracts that qualify for the CBDG grants and things like that would would be where I would start in crafting a problem statement and really thinking about something tangible and specific that we could do that would not, you know, present significant challenges from a financial management perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Kearns.
Yeah, I I'll be brief. I I mainly want to underscore a few things that have already been said. I think I also was able to attend the symposium, so it was great to be able to hear it firsthand, that there was a conversation. Because I appreciate the fact that that it sounds like your method will be broader than just the results from that symposium, because I think that is really important because even within the symposium, there was a conversation where it still, to me, felt very clear that there was a disconnect where there were builders talking about, well, we have shovel ready lots and thi- this is the price point. And then you hear from another, like the realtors or the bankers talking about, you know, that's still very high, you know, for what the, you know, the consumer side and the rental side. And so I think that is an element that definitely needs to be continued to be explored in more depth. And so to to kind of, you know, build off of what Councilmember Motney was saying where it's, yeah, I think a lot more needs to be put into it, which it sounds like you're doing. So that is good. And then kind of the the comments that Councilmember Bowlin was talking about in terms of, you know, the status quo and what's that saying? Like, if you're gonna, if you're doing what you've always done, you're gonna get what you've always got. And so I think that we need to be more creative and with that paradigm shift and we were talking about the book and, you know, kind of the the principles of Strong Towns. And I know that we've had a connection with that group and that, you know, if there's continuing conversations with that organization to see if there's ways that that makes sense for our community that that they can help staff with, you know, maybe they can help provide those conversations of where to focus or what has been helpful in other communities. You know, maybe that's part of the conversation as well. Because it seemed like they were, they had the, you know, they would offer that or that's a conversation that continued can continue. And then the last thing, because I know I'm taking up a lot of time, I said it'd be brief. We talked about the CDBG process that's coming up. And so I know we have a public hearing this coming, our next council meeting on Monday, and I know that there's a public consolidated plan resident public forum at the library next Wednesday on the twenty sixth from five thirty to seven thirty at the public library. So that would also be an opportunity for us to get more feedback. But then also, like Motney, you were saying about something very specific and tangible, like that is money that we have in our community. Is there something creative, not the status quo, that we can be doing with those funds that might, you know, start making an impact or at least displaying ways that we can, you know, taking steps to address the issue? Thank you.
Councilmember Ward.
I I wonder this agenda item is presentation, discussion and direction. And I'm I'm wondering if in a sentence you could just clarify what the direction is that you're looking for from us tonight.
That's a great question. So the council obviously drives the ship. So we need direction from the council on what you want us to be diving into and and what you want us to be working on. So if the consensus of this council is, don't bring back any financial incentive packages for housing yet or or programs like that. Well, you know, but we want you to focus on other areas, then that's what we'll do. If there's an appetite that you want us to look into some of the financial programs, then we'll look into those. But ultimately, we're gonna need to see how aggressive this council wants to be with addressing the housing issues. And again, that's not to say, because we don't have a fully mapped out program yet or the the positives or the negatives. We we just have the ideas at this point as as to what we've heard and and what we have been hearing. But if there's no appetite for us to even, you know, go down that road, then we need that direction, too. So that that's what we're looking for.
I can only speak for myself. I I would like more information on what on on what it would take to get us to a point where we could vote on any of those those suggestions and others that that have come up yet tonight. I'm not in a spot where I feel like I I could vote next week on anything, financial or not. But that doesn't mean that that I don't want more information on it because ultimately I, what I hear you saying is that you want to be able to bring us actionable items that we can vote on. So let's, let's do that, get gather the information if that's for my part.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa, thank you for that website. I think, you know, so often we find that information is just not as available as we'd like it to be or or it's out there and people aren't aware. But so I really hope that that's going to be something that helps our constituents, you know, see what's in the pipeline, what other options might be. So I'm really excited about that. A couple of things, just echoing other comments, I really agree with Councilmember Motney. I want to know what things really cost, not what we think they're gonna cost. And so more financial information, I think, would really be helpful. I also agree with Councilmember Bowlin. I really want to be careful about spending, you know, I mean, a lot of, just glancing at this report. I understand the city, you know, has to be, you know, be a partner in all this work. But I I think we need to be really careful about, you know, the city spending so much money and not being in a true partnership with developers and bankers that have been mentioned earlier in the evening. And so I I feel, I guess I'll end by saying I agree with Councilmember Ward. I feel like I need to know a lot more about specifics before I could vote on any of these actual items. So thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks and then Motney and then Bowlin and then everybody.
I'll just be super brief, mostly because I will not be at the next meeting. And so I want to make sure that that my thoughts are are heard. What I'm hearing from city staff is that we are we are giving you the ability to explore these things and cost out that it may be not cost efficient to do some of these things. But what you want from us is to say as a council that, yes, we believe this is an issue. Yes, we believe it's developers, but also renters, but also individuals in the community. Now, please go explore it. And then if we find something of this that is fleshed out, has good information, and we believe that there's support for that, you'll then bring that as a resolution, as an action item that we will then vote and say, yes, we've officially approved this, right? It feels like there's some disconnect of, well, we don't know this, and that's true, but what we're telling you to do is to go out and bring that information back to us so that we are then informed on whether or not to do that thing. Yes?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. I support that one hundred percent. I think these are all possible things that we could do, and some of them, I think, could be better than others. But if we have individuals at this particular meeting who have come back to us and said, these are things that we think could help, I think we should go out and explore whether or not those are things that could actually help that we could be a part of. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin.
I appreciate your comment and I agree that the council should be giving direction, but me being a very thoughtful processor, I do not I do not see a value of the staff researching all of this, bringing it back to the council next week and having to make a decision without maybe processing it as a in three on one or
Yeah, we we want to be researching it now. We you you'd be coming back at the next meeting and voting on a resolution that would say that would say, look into this potential program, we're interested in this or or whatever it may be. And there might be a menu of options. And maybe there can be some discussion at the next meeting, pull this out or put this in. So and then we would be doing the researching and bringing the information back.
Okay, I have a whole list of options that should be, I feel could be added. And it basically is in the Strong Towns. Escaping the Housing Trap book, they do have some argumentations. Some of them are financial, but they mostly focus on the core, which is what those developers were talking about. And it also includes the consumer, taking them into account. So I I would like to have those added to whatever list you're going to be examining before you bring something back. Does that make sense?
Definitely understand it, understand what you're saying for sure.
So I I would just say that doing some of that due diligence first without a resolution, I think, would be productive. I think you would very quickly come to realize that some of those things you could eliminate before you even bring them forward. There's a risk of not doing that, and that is that you freeze current work in process because people will be waiting to see if the composition of this council is willing to do things like buy down interest rates and other things that we perhaps would never be willing to do. They would sit in wings and and wait. The other comment that I would just say regarding zoning code changes, I don't think from any of the information that we have now about what this problem looks like from a macroeconomic perspective, zoning code changes in the communities that have done so, it has not made any profound difference. Improving the process, which I think was alluded to in the article written by the Panograph yesterday as another story, and improving the process and the interaction in the end to end process of construction permitting, all of that sort of thing, yes. But you should be empowered to do that without any type of resolution from the council when you're talking about reengineering process.
Okay. Well, do you feel like you have what you need?
I think so. And and to Councilmember Motney's point, when you do the quick math, there there is a huge gap between trying to build what they can build now in an affordable house. And it's it's in excess of six figures. So to to that point, it very well may be that this council isn't there yet on a program like that. I think we can craft a resolution that will show that we're continuing to put this as a priority that we're focusing in on what we're going to be able to do that will hopefully move the needle based on what we heard at the symposium from the developers. So we'll we'll work on a document. We'll we'll try and have that ready for the next meeting. And at the very least, we can have a touch, touch point on it at the next meeting. But we can keep this conversation going. And and even the conversation tonight, I think, has been helpful because all of this helps us as staff figure out what 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 the appetite of the council is and what direction you want to go in. So I I do appreciate it. I know it's an important issue for everybody and we're gonna keep working on it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, staff. We're going to move on to item five B, a presentation discussion on proposed changes to chapter twenty one, section three point seven, bulk waste collection and chapter thirty six, scavengers, waste collectors or waste haulers. Sounds like a Batman movie or something.
It's an exciting meeting tonight.
And this is requested by the Public Works Department. And I am going to should I turn it over to you first or?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I've, we've got Public Works Director Mo's Ricky, Assistant Director Colleen Winterland here tonight. We've had some We've had some different conversations on the council and with people in the community and then within Public Works about some potential changes and updates to our refuse code. Has to do with, some of it has to do with fines and with the costs to make sure that everybody is treated fairly, and then also with relation, some relation to the Citizens Convenience Center as well. So I've asked Mose and Colleen to come tonight and and overview those potential changes with you. If this council thinks that these are good ideas and you want to pursue it further, then we'll bring it forward in ordinance in the future to adopt them. With that, I turn it over to Director Ricky.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and City Manager. Before I begin, I know I have a large number of Public Works staff that watch these meetings, and so I just want to say thank you very much for all the hard work you provided with a smile on your face during this extreme heat we've been experiencing. And I know we're going to be experiencing it unceasingly for a while and a lot earlier than we should be. So thank you. I appreciate you guys more than you know. Better men than I am. With that, we'll move forward, and our city manager has done a nice job of outlining what we're coming here tonight to speak with you about. But I do have a few things. So next slide, please. I wish I always want to have a little clicker. It'd be nice to have a little clicker. I can just right there. It'd be nice. So I am here this evening due to the fact that we have experienced a number of questions about our ability to pick up bulk waste that is outside of our regular bulk free pickup times, especially for certain types of properties. Tonight, I will discuss our current thoughts on some of the problems, the solutions, and the costs which might be associated with these things. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as we discuss some of these issues together, I will refer to what we believe to be mainly stemming from properties that we refer to as managed residential properties. That is not to imply that all managed residential properties are an issue. However, we have noticed that many of our issues have arisen from managed properties that could be due to the fact that they have evictions, they have renters that may leave midnight and decide not to pay their rents, and they just kind of disappear. And therefore, they are then stuck with a property that is still filled with the last residence property, and it's a problem to dispose of. Next slide, please. So this is a good example, these two pictures of kind of to demonstrate what we're looking at and what we're trying to address. As you can see, the aesthetics demonstrated in these two pictures as an example of waste that has been placed out to be picked up, but not all containers have been properly utilized, resulting in ways strewn about and difficult for our staff to properly collect. This becomes a blight in the neighborhoods and can lead to safety concerns as well as potential other issues as these type of things are blown or strewn out throughout the road as they become a major liability. Secondly, for reference points, as we disperse, for this particular instance, we would probably utilize what I would imagine to be a a dump truck with a driver, obviously, a loader with a driver. And with that being said, we would probably take about one trip to the to the disposal yards to dispose of this. However, with that being said, a bucket right now, which currently is $25 per bucket, and we're proposing to increase it to 100, is about equivalent to a sofa. So if you can imagine a sofa, what a front end loader could pick up a sofa, that's about what a bucket is. So when we dispatch our skilled staff with the heavy equipment to pick these bulk materials up, as you know, it takes skills to operate this heavy equipment on residential streets and in neighborhoods. You know, to put it in perspective, this is not Mose and Daryl Ricky going out there with their Dodge Dakota with a homemade trailer on the back and a couple of shovels, you know what I'm saying? They're having to manipulate and maneuver heavy equipment through our residential streets and our our neighborhoods to take care of these type of situations when they arise, and they arise sometimes in the middle of the night, as we spoke about earlier. Next slide, please. So issues with managed properties. One of the things is for these prop, these different properties that are not in our solid waste program, and they're setting their bulk and brush out for collection, and they're not currently encapsulated in our program. What we will do is when we notice that and it is reported to us, we will notate and send a letter, and they have two weeks to resolve the issues, or Public Works will go out and dispose of it for them, and then we will bill them appropriately. The other thing is the fact that we'd have these type of properties inside of our current solid waste programs. And when they do this, they don't always adhere to the collection dates appropriately. And then we have an issue with neighbors, because again, as we mentioned earlier, it's the aesthetics, it's unsightly, it causes health concerns and liability issues. Next slide, please. So in these instances, what we're looking at here is proposing an opportunity to put a sliding scale in place with obviously incentives that increase for habitual users. And these, once we have these habitual users in place, we would put this into a database that we create and track. And we would also hope to educate these property owners and agencies to make, who do make honest mistakes and keep them inside the parameters in which we hope they would operate. With that being said, the advantage is to have them in our system is that we can track them. And as they continue to have any issues with the education or the understanding of how we would like them to conduct themselves in putting this bulk waste out, we can help to continue to educate them and hopefully maybe even to help moderate and remediate some of the behaviors in which we are dealing with. Next slide, please. Okay, and the Citizens Convenience Center. So this is one area I want to talk about as well. Our staff has a difficult task when they confront users who are improperly at the CCC. It's not an easy task, and it will be a topic that we'll have to obviously address in the future as well. With that being said, we have commercial users, there's a commercial abuse, so we currently have such things as scavengers and waste haulers who come out and use the CCC as it's not intended to be used. With that, and moving forward, what I would like to do is amend some of the languages in these inside these documents so that we can probably remove scavengers, the scavenger language, because I don't believe that currently we have many, if any, of all scavengers in the city. And also, we would like to be able to appropriately take the waste haulers and start to have them recorded, so we know exactly who we're dealing with inside city limits and who's addressing needs for the city. With that being said, the staff who operate the CCC do a fantastic job, as I cannot be more proud of the positions they're put into and make sure they put the well being of the city and our department's needs at the forefront of their decision making, when oftentimes they're confronted with people who are trying to abuse the systems of the CCC and oftentimes are unruly. We've had to have the police called down before for people who we have questioned and who we have found that do not belong at the CCC to use the CCC. One of the other things I've added in this slide, and I want you to see this is a term that Colleen has used on the day I came down there, is pay for what you produce. And we're constantly striving to be able to put ourselves in a position that we can pay for what we produce. We think that's the way we should be approaching things for the city, and it's probably the best use of city funds when we're trying to be as self sufficient as possible. I put it all together pretty quickly. At this point in time, I think I could obviously open up for any questions if you guys would like.
Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for this wonderful presentation. It is a long time coming. I I did have just a couple of questions about the first portion of it. In addition to the the proposal to increase the fee, the penalty, right? It's not a fee. It's a penalty for not following city code. But in addition to that, is there any thought to decreasing the two week window? Because two weeks is an awful long time to have have stuff sit there and have animals and wind and rain and everything else blow it around. And I would propose decreasing that pretty drastically.
And I I appreciate that. And I would like to say that I would like to be able to make that happen. But however, currently with our staffing levels where we're at with our current staff, it would be difficult for us to address anything in a more timely manner than we currently do.
Oh, I'm not talking about you guys having to to get out there faster than two weeks. I'm talking about that the the fees or the the penalties should start kicking in before two weeks.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I think we definitely have the ability to do that if we would like to move forward in that fashion. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
Customize this part in time because we're spreading it forward initially.
I think two days is too long, frankly, seriously. I mean, I'll show you lots more pictures than the ones that we've got there. I sent you one this morning. The other thing that I I just wonder about is, is there any thought to who reports the issues? And and is there an option for for city staff and not just your staff, but any city staff who happen to be driving by to report that and and any kind of expectation that 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 would happen proactively?
So yes, we do. We we do have staff that actively look for these type of situations. We, as we were going throughout the city, we look for these types of things. Colleen has more history, obviously, at the Public Works Department. If you would like to touch on that, just turn your mic over.
We have the garbage and recycle guys on the routes every every week, so they report it to us. If you're, if anybody's just driving by, My Bloomington app is a good way to do it immediately. As soon as the superintendents get it, they go out, they look at it. The letter can be sent out if they're not in the program right away then. But even if they're, you know, there's times when we'll just say that that's just too much, just go get it, and we need to bill them.
Okay, I I asked a question about the My Bloomington app and the whether that's the low, the way to report that. I you may not have an answer yet.
I'll get more information on that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Crumple.
Yeah, I just had a question that occurred to me when you talk about, because in my head, I immediately am thinking about like evictions and and people who are going through that process, and I know that that is through the county with the Sheriff's Department if they're not, if they don't move out on their own. And so is that, like, what kind of relationship or communication do you have with the with that side of things? Where if there's coordination or working to better understand when they know that they're going to be setting someone out?
Right. And so I would say to you is that currently there probably is no communication in regards to when we know someone's going to be evicted. The first time that we're noticed that there's going to be an issue with bulk pickup from eviction is when we actually see that out onto the curb.
Yeah, I mean, that that would be something to consider if there's a way, if there if there's a way to know that, if it's like, you know, the landlord has to coordinate with the sheriff to be able to take the property back. And then it's like a conversation about I know I'm gonna, you know, like, now that I have the key, you know, I've I've reclaimed my property, I know I'm going to be putting a lot of this stuff on the curb, so.
So I think that's a great point, and that's just relationship building. And of course, you know, we're all about relationships, especially coming through PW. So we can start having those conversations. Thank you.
Councilmember Boland.
Oh, yeah, I have a question. Is is this, does this affect others besides the managed apartments? I mean, like, single family homes that put a bunch of also the fee increase?
No, the fee increase will be strictly for non-single family homes.
Okay. Could, I don't want to put out exact numbers, but explain what you have to do with that stuff. I mean, you have to pick it up. That's staff time, and then you have to drive how many miles? And then you have to pay to to dump it, and then you have to drive back and start the process all over again.
So it's a great question. It's a fantastic question. It's a it's a broad question, to be frank with you, because, of course, you know, we do cover quite a large landmass. And so it could depend upon where the reported issue is at. However, if you were to take into account, generically speaking, those pictures we saw of those two rather large bulk areas that need to be picked up, if we were to send our 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 dump truck with a driver, a loader with a driver, and with the disposal fees that would go into place, which would be republic at that point in time for that type of bulk waste, we would probably be looking rough, tough, right around the $300 mark for us to send out for a one hour minimum.
So, I mean, $100 is reasonable. It's not like overcharging or anything.
My opinion, very reasonable.
Councilmember Montney.
I guess I just have a question as to whether or not you would be undercharging, and if you should try to calculate some type of actual cost of the removal and disposal of that property since they're nonparticipants in the solid waste disposal system. I mean, you just laid out the elements that you would consider, you know, the cost of labor, the cost of operating your vehicle, the value of that vehicle for that period of time, et cetera.
So I think it's a great question. I'm probably going to let Colleen answer that, as she often talks about the same type of issues. So Colleen, would you feel comfortable taking that?
So currently, if they're in the solid waste program, it was $25 a bucket. If they're not in the solid waste program, and we have to send them a letter and say, if you don't clean this up, we will, it's $100 a bucket already. If they're not part of the program already. So I mean, it might be we take into consideration if they're not in the program, we raise that fee up also, you know, whatever you guys suggest, I mean, to bring back to you.
Well, I guess, again, I I would just want to see the math of it all so that we're being fair in the cost distribution across the population, including those who are playing by the rules.
100%, appreciate that.
Yes, Chris.
Just a small correction. He said, Mose, I think you said, single family homes that it wouldn't apply to. I think what you meant was non-owner occupied homes. So it would apply only to non-owner occupied homes. So not, it would apply to single family homes if the owner is not the occupant. Thank you.
Basically rental properties.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Ward.
Why not?
I just don't think I've had gotten there yet. And we're assessing, we're taking, you know, email at one bite at a time.
Okay.
Well, that seems like a good place to end it. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to the city managers' discussion, and Mr. Jergens.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll and we'll follow up on that last discussion as well and make sure we're getting all the low hanging fruit that's out there in terms of addressing some of those issues. So we'll have some more conversations, and we'll get that ready for the council to review and give a final consideration. Phil, if you could go to the next slide. Again, just kind of starting off with the homelessness work that we're doing in the community, continuing to work on finding more shelter space. And I I think that was an issue addressed in public comment tonight. The space is getting smaller at the Eastview property, but starting to see encampments, tents pop up in other areas. And so truly, until we we address the shelter needs and and get some more services tied in, I I think we're going to continue to see that as an issue. One of the things I did not mention last week that I meant to mention was that Home Sweet Home now has on its staff a street outreach specialist, somebody that's going out there and connecting people that are not living in sheltered space to services. So hopefully, they'll find some success with that. Phil, if you could go to the next slide. Wanted to also share some numbers that Home Sweet Home shared with me today. Over the course of the encampment that's been on that Eastview property, they've had 80 unduplicated individuals, so 80 different people at any, throughout the history of that property, staying in a tent there. And as I mentioned last week, that's, you know, they're they're now trying to wind that down, and and that is not growing. 13 of those individuals successfully obtained other housing, 10 moved into shelter space at Home Sweet Home. Over 22, they helped to get state IDs so they could start getting into services. And over 40 have utilized Home Sweet Home support to receive mail and to store vital records. So just a quick update on on some of those actions. Next slide. This last weekend, Pete Davidson performed at the BCPA. He had, as I think the council is aware, he had a sold out crow, a sold out crowd at the BCPA for his first show. They added a second show, and it was nearly sold out. One of the things that the fire department did, and it was actually a couple of individual firefighters. You may not know that his father passed away. He was a firefighter and died in 9/11. So one of the things the firefighter family community does is when he goes to perform in a community, they provide him with some sort of a fire shirt. And so the firefighters here in Bloomington had a special guns and had a special guns and hoses jersey made for him that he apparently loved, and he wore during both performances at the BCPA. So just wanted to share that and highlight that. And you can see it there on the monitor and a couple of the firefighters that were able to give that to them. Next slide. Juneteenth is on Wednesday. I wanted to just give a couple of quick updates. As this holiday gets integrated into the city, we're kind of in a hybrid mode. Our offices will be closed to the public, but our park services will still be open. So all of our parks programming, our Public Works will still be picking up trash and refuse. And obviously, police and fire department will still be working, but our public offices will be closed. Also, we've got the community celebration that's coming up on Saturday. It is between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. A lot of different activities going on at Miller Park for this. And Phil, if you could go to the next slide. The first thing will be to kick off the event at Miller Park, and we're going to have a softball game between the city and the town that will start at 10:00 a.m. at Miller Park. So invite everybody to come out to that and attend, and then stay and take a look at the community celebration that's to follow. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that's a good place to end it, too. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Boland, second by Councilmember Hendricks, and all those in favor, so you file by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. We'll see you next Monday.